Hey, listen. This is the crap I get on my phone because I'm a clickbait sucker. William Wrigley Jr. sold soap in eighteen ninety-one, offering baking powder as an incentive to buy it. The baking powder proved to be more popular, so he started selling it, offering gum as an incentive. But the gum proved to be even more popular, so he started selling that in eighteen ninety-three juicy fruit debut. So he didn't even know what he had.
Is it no, right?
You know, that's Wrigley Field in Chicago is the Wrigley Company, and that's where. Hey, listen. This is the crap I get on my phone because I'm a clickbait sucker. William Wrigley Jr. sold soap in eighteen ninety-one, offering baking powder as an incentive to buy it. The baking powder proved to be more popular, so he started selling it, offering gum as an incentive. But the gum proved to be even more popular, so he started selling that in eighteen ninety-three juicy fruit debut. So he didn't even know what he had.
Does it know, right?
You know, that's Wrigley Field in Chicago is the Wrigley Company, and that's where.
Well, most best ideas.
You're not Chris.
Chris said he's had enough of us.
He won't come back.
I said enough of you.
That didn't take long.
One meeting. Two meetings, he goes out.
We gonna call him in?
Not sure. It's down just like.
Appreciate like playoff season time.
Yeah. That's okay. Same. We're gonna send you to Philadelphia where that's at. You won't. The Phil, Phil here, I'm passing it by. Okay, you buy it. Okay, good morning, everyone. We ask you please rise for the opening prayer to pledge allegiance before we convene the commissioner's public meeting. Dear heavenly Father, our hearts are full of thanks this morning. We know that you're the Creator and Author over us. We give you thanks this week for the monies we received for the levy system and the positive news on the airport. We thank all those who have worked diligently towards positive news on two very significant items that are vital to growth in our area. And we ask for your guidance and direction as we realize these are only the initial steps to the oral process. Lord, this past Tuesday was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Find men and women of law enforcement who protect the line between good and evil. We thank you for their enormous sacrifice and service they provide daily. We're thankful for their families who've also experienced the sacrifice of that oath. We ask you to provide safety and protection to them as they protect our communities, and we take the time to thank them for their service. Next Monday, we'll recognize and celebrate Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And on this day and throughout the year, may we encourage each other to volunteer and help their communities to promote equal rights for every American. We pray for all racism to cease. We know that you created us in your image, and your love sees no color. We're always on your eyes, and that's the measure of your love. So this morning, we think of your words, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called children of God." Our law enforcement who served to keep the peace, and Dr. King who dedicated his life for equality and peace are examples of your words. May we honor and follow the example you set likewise. These things may not leave place before you this day. Amen. Good morning. At this time, we convene the commissioner's public meeting and ask for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I make motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
One second.
All fair side.
Aye.
Okay, so carried. Do we have poetic comments on agenda items only at this time from the audience? Are you not any online?
No.
Okay, then we'll move on to reports.
Good morning, Caitlin.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm obviously.
Caitlin. I see she called in sick today, so I think I want to.
We hope she feels better.
Yes.
Um, she said, oh, I won't get into it. Presented for your ratification are the invoices due through January seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, to be paid on January tenth in the amount of two million, nine hundred and four thousand, fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents. The breakdown is as follows. General fund, one million, two hundred, thirty-six thousand, four sixteen, twenty-seven cents, which is forty-two point five eight percent of the total. The grants, ARPA grant, two hundred and fifty thousand, which is a eight point six one percent. No Act thirteen grants, other grants, including five hundred thousand dollars to children and youth as a pass-through. The total is five hundred, three thousand, two hundred and four dollars and twenty-one cents, which equals seventeen point three three percent. RMS, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, ninety-seven cents, which is twenty-eight point seven seven percent. And escrows of seventy-eight thousand, nine fifty-four and thirty-five cents, so it's two hundred, or two point seven two percent.
Okay, and the, um, the ARPA item was to tie that in value municipal authority. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars wanted to recover purchase for their authority. And then the escrow count, that's children, youth, guardian, and our county health plan for the escrow count. Okay, a little motion.
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Should I say, since we have the absent Jason and Commissioner Maravito, that the RMS money is all covered by RMS?
If you'd like to adopt that.
No, I don't want to adopt that rule. I just say it for the first time only.
Thank you. Hey, a motion, a second. All fair side.
Aye.
So carried, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to personnel. Commissioners, seeking the approval of the following personnel actions as conditional authors of employment, subject to the successful completion of a background check and all other employment conditions as outlined in attachment A. Human Resources Office, Allison Wolf, temporary human resources business partner, part-time. New position, forty dollars per hour, not to exceed one thousand hours in a year, expected date, uh, seven January, two thousand and one.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll make a motion.
Now, Mr. Chair, um, do, just to clarify, the way the county works, as well as what we're used to, do we make the motion first, then have the discussion?
Make the second, then we'll have, have the discussion.
Okay. So I'll make the second.
Okay, comments, or?
Uh, I, I just, I was, I was a little taken back on, on the forty dollars an hour, to be honest with you at the start. Um, did a little personal investigation. You and I had a conversation as well. Um, I think it's important to know that probably if we had to take this out, and unfortunately, we're in a very difficult position with our HR department right now, where we're losing two people. Um, we gotta replace two people, and I think, um, keeping, uh, uh, I, I struggled all the way around with keeping a, an employee that was leaving on temporarily. But I think that the value it brings is some knowledge to the department until we get this replaced. And I think if we had to go out to an outside source, you know, where you use like, you know, a temporary company, it would cost us more than the forty dollars an hour. So I, I was a little concerned about the forty. I, I understand the reason behind it, so I just wanted to clarify that with my, my reasoning.
Yeah, I understand your comments, so it still is within her pay grade. Why, why she would have done that?
And she's, that position currently as the full-time is in the thirty-six dollar and change amount.
Right, so it's within her pay range, but I, I hear your concerns. She, she was a deputy, um, she's willing to continue assist, um, running the department fully without the HR director being there. And her being there, she would be, uh, helping us, uh, remotely and, um, until we get the two new people in position. But if it be, um, we're not gonna miss a step by having her still here at part-time, why would we search for those two people? She'll be the go-to person for HR, uh, she'll be guiding the HR ship until we have those two, two replacements in place. Um, if we do outsource it, we're probably looking at double, um, and maybe come in with no knowledge.
Right.
And, uh, so it's, it's vital that we keep her in that role, uh, until we have those two people in place, so she can continue the daily operations of the office.
And can I clarify that she is gonna be one hundred percent remote, so she'll have no interaction physically in the, in the department, or she will have some?
It's gonna be a combo.
Okay. Um, and we'll have a layout from our director, I'm assuming, of, of the duties we want her to perform.
Yes.
As a temporary employee.
Plus, by being part-time, the benefits are no longer in place.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Can we comment? Okay, all fair side.
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Hey, we want to thank, um, Howie for staying aboard to help us guide the ship. Kind of reminds me of a situation where we had, um, a gentleman that took another job, um, he was in buildings and, and facilities. Um, anyway, in the middle of the assortment project up on Lake Mary Road. He was in the middle of the project and, and he volunteered to come back part-time, um, to complete his part of the project. Um, he came back after an hour, which is a little bit more, uh, but at the same time, he had the knowledge of the project, he had expertise. And, um, if we looked at outsourcing it, we were finding out seventy to ninety dollars per hour if we went out. Then to bring that person in, start him all over on the project, and we, we were very thankful that, that he cared enough to want to finish that. And, uh, he did finish the job and did a great job for us.
And we save a ton of money because he hooked us up for running the general service into the facility user electric.
So we compare this to similar situation where Howie has the knowledge, she's gonna continue to build the operations, keep the office running, until we get the two new people in place. So we want to thank her for, for her, uh, her dedication to the county in that aspect, and wish her well in her new employment.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, you hate to lose somebody, but I, I've always been very, in, in my previous roles, um, you, you cannot hinder somebody that has the ability to better our lives.
Absolutely.
It's, it's never a negative when somebody leaves their position. Um, obviously, it makes it a struggle for us to, to replace, and unfortunately for us right now, the HR side is tough, where, where we've lost two back to back.
Thank you. So all fair side?
Uh, I think we did this.
I'm so carried. And at this time, we recess the commissioner's public meeting for the salary board, and we convene the salary board this time.
All right, Salary Board, seeking your approval to, uh, seeking your approval on, uh, appointing the following individuals to the Salary Board. Scott Mesker, Chairman, Commissioner, Chairman and Chairman of the Salary Board. And Krista Rogers, Controller and Secretary of the Salary Board.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll make a motion.
One second.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Are you done? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried. Four point three. I believe we're gonna table this?
Yes, Commissioner, seeking your approval to table four point three. We have a little bit of work to do on that.
Okay.
Do we need a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried, and then Krista, we'll wait for you to get to us with what exactly is needed.
Um, I'll send a email out so we can make a plan to move forward with meetings, and I need to get minutes from the Commissioner's office to put together, and I'll maintain them in our safe in the office.
Great.
If that's all right?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we'll adjourn the salary board and we convene the commissioner's public meeting.
I guess we'll, uh, table five point one as well?
Yes.
All right, uh, Commissioner, seeking your approval to table five point one.
Hey, can I motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. Everybody motion, just hereby table.
Okay, five point two through four, Maya.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, the first item I have for you is, um, five point two, vote to approve Title IV D attorney agreement with Patricia Shitman Esquire in the amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Uh, the Department of, um, Human Services requires that, that domestic relations have a solicitor, and so Patricia Shitman has been, for the past several years, been the attorney of, um, of choice. And, uh, it is funded through that department.
Okay, the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried.
The next item, um, five point three, vote to approve this mission of the redevelopment assistance capital program known as RACP. Um, grant application to the PA, PA Office of the Budget for the coronary forensic facility in the amount of three million, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this is to help assist with the construction, um, of that new facility. The total project, I believe, is, um, six point eight million submitted. We have to provide a fifty percent match as part of the, um, RACP requirements.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we want to thank Chuck and his staff, Kate, and the entire staff, um, for bringing this to us, and it was a short timeline, so, um, Maya and her staff. And, uh, did I miss anybody who's worked diligently on this?
Shannon's been helping as well.
Shannon?
Yeah.
And her staff to get this done, which is, the deadline's tomorrow.
It is tomorrow, yes.
So, thank you.
Maya, may I ask, um, so just to clarify, so the project sells six point eight million, uh, we, we, we're matching the grant. So we're, we're applying for this grant, and is this a state or a federal?
It'd be a state.
That's a state grant.
Yeah, so three point four is actually what we're submitting for, but we have to show that a fifty percent.
Right, yes. All right, thank you.
Uh-huh, you're welcome.
Okay. Um, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye. So carried, thank you.
Yep, and the last item I have for you is vote to approve the list of agreements approved by the Director of Administration. That's for the month of December of twenty twenty-three, and there were twenty agreements.
For the new commissioners, these are all, uh, contracts that I approved that are, uh, below ten thousand dollars. They're all typical, um, re-accuring contracts for, uh, professional services such as solicitors, conflict attorneys, interpreters, things of that nature. And that's.
That's the list, yes. Okay, can I motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Jim? Yeah, thank you. Yep, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, as you know, we had, uh, some of them made out, we had bid out the cross-pipe, uh, minimally acceptable crosspipes for Williamsport levy system back in December. Um, we received, um, unfortunately, we only received one bid, and it was, um, far exceeding what we originally, um, thought it would be. Uh, we were anticipating between four and five million dollars, and the bid we received was eleven point, almost eight million dollars. Um, so what we are going to do is, there were a number of items in this, this bid that, uh, due to not having as much information about the actual pipe, we were, we were making certain engineering assumptions. So what our consultant did was, they're going through the bid to determine, um, based upon hopefully some newer information the city is going to be providing us with. Um, we had the videos, but we didn't have the engineering analysis. So hopefully, once we acquire that engineering analysis, we'll be able to actually, uh, make the bid a little bit tighter. Um, we'll also be, uh, looking at certain pipes that were, were optional, uh, dropping them off of the bid so that we can get a bid that is more consistent with the amount of funding we have available for, with the EDA grant that we have with this project. So we're recommending that this bid be rejected, and we will rebid with, hopefully, within the next couple of months. Uh, we have informed EDA, they did understand, and they were in support of us rejecting the bid.
Okay, can I motion?
Okay, so.
Can I motion first?
Oh, you need a motion? I can't even ask her a question, but that's, I'm just.
Just a second.
I'll make a motion.
One second?
I'll second.
Okay, then, please.
Um. So, once it's all, do we think our bid is, or our budget is still close?
It's going to depend upon this engineering analysis. Uh, we did not have access to any of the videos originally. They became accessible, um, mid-fall. So now that we have those, um, we can make some more engineering analysis, but we need to finish part of that. There was an engineering analysis that was supposed to be done with those videos, and we don't have that, and the city doesn't have that. So we're waiting for them to acquire that from the company that did the videos. Once we get that, um, we should be able to tighten up a lot of portions of the bid. Um, and then also maybe even propose a different type of solution to repair the pipe, um, that is less expensive than what was originally. Because we had to go with the, the type of, um, I'm gonna call it sliplining for a better term, because I'm not an engineer. Um, we had to go with the, the best option with the knowledge we have. Um, there could be less expensive options if we know that a pipe may not need a full, full.
Relined.
Yeah, relined, so, um, and with that in play, this will actually, especially with some of the larger pipes, we may actually be able to do some concrete work that will be much less expensive. Um, so that's what we are, uh, looking for.
Okay. Um, just, just to clarify, cost sides. Uh, so the engineering study that was previously done was not complete. Are, is that under?
It's not a.
Our guidance or the city's?
No, no, that's the city's.
So the city is paying for this?
The city's required to video the pipes every so many years, and this was done, I, I think it was towards the beginning of last year. But one of the pieces is missing. So, you know, we got hold of the videos for the consultants, the contractors to look at, but that engineering analysis, uh, is missing. So we need to get that, so we can, uh, tighten up our bids, so that we can have a bid that's much closer to what we originally thought. So.
I think just lesson learned as we move forward, right? You know?
We weren't even aware at the time that the videos were available. Um, so it worked.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, over the second motion to reject, uh, the bid that was received, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you.
Five point six, Forrest. Proposal from a clear ballot?
Forrest. Uh, so this item is a clear ballot proposal for onsite election day support for primary and for the November election this year. So this is to have, uh, a, a clear ballot field engineer onsite. These are subject matter experts who know the voting system top to bottom. Uh, they're there to provide immediate onsite expert advice on anything that might come up that's voting system related. It could be calls from poll workers during the day out at the precincts. It could be election results reporting at the end of the night when we have to get data out of the system and send it to the state. So they're there as a, an immediate onsite resource, and they've been invaluable to us in the past, so.
Okay. And this is a twenty twenty-four budget, right?
Yes.
Okay, can I motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Five point seven, Jenny. It's done in Recreation Park and Conservation.
Morning, Jenny.
Okay, good morning, commissioners. This is acceptance of, it's actually a hundred thousand dollar DCNR grant. Um, we had applied last spring for a grant to update the County Comprehensive Recreation Parks Open Space and Greenways Plan. The entire project is two hundred thousand dollars. Our plan was last updated in, completed in two thousand and eight, so it's been a while. Um, and it will help identify and prioritize recreation projects in greenways throughout the county. There'll be a lot of, um, public involvement and outreach to municipalities as part of this plan update.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
And for our new commissioners, this is another example of our playing department, our hard work. In this case, Jenny bringing in money, resources to the county, uh, to bring in projects and further, um, and handle the county, make the county much better. So we want to appreciate your work, recognize it, and share in your entire department, the money they bring in through grants, and, and Maya's department working with, uh, hand in hand to get those grants approved and processed.
We've got a great current.
We do. So thank you.
Yeah, it's really, you know, grant monies, and, and obviously, for us as taxpayers, it's all our money. But it's, it's a wonderful thing when we can get some county money that comes from the state or the federal government, so all that work is greatly, uh, appreciated.
And if it doesn't, if it doesn't come here, it's gonna go someplace else.
Right, absolutely. It's, it's not like it's, it's money that's gonna not go somewhere, so the more we can get, and then the better we are as grant writers, and obviously Shannon's got a team that's doing a great job with that, is greatly appreciated, because there's a lot of counties that, or a lot of communities in general, that don't write grants well, and they don't get that money, so it's, it's great that we, we have that ability here.
And the department heads and elected officials, you know, bring it to their attention, you know, we just, we just review them in the coroner's office. And, and the timeline, a very short timeline, and a lot of hard work went into it, and to get it, get it submitted, and that gives us the opportunity to hopefully receive these. Thank you. Okay, all fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five point eight, uh, Leslie, agreeing with the wind stream.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Matt.
Morning.
Um, seeking your approval, um, for an amendment to our wind stream contract that we have currently today. Basically, this contract's just going to, um, up what we have for internet speeds. We have a hundred meg today, and we're gonna go to a one gig, um, internet, um, tunnel, if you will. Um, this will just, um, go to the end of our contract, which is the end of twenty-six. This is a budgeted item. Um, this will be, um, both for Department of Public Safety and for the courthouse at twenty-four, um, twenty-four fifty-two a month, and, um, as I stated, it is in the budget for this year.
Okay, motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All fair side?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Commissioners, if you're nervous, this is, uh, our first step into moving towards Wi-Fi.
at different facilities.
Be nice to have it in courtrooms.
Oh, sure.
I think we're one of the few courthouses that don't have it in their courtrooms.
And we're talking, I think we're going to do courtroom one, we're definitely doing courtroom one with Wi-Fi, and I believe two, but don't quote me on that one. Definitely courtroom one.
Great.
We have two courtrooms as test beds to get this up.
Good. And the courts are, are very pleased about that news. Okay. Mr. Collins.
Want to go first, or? No, I have not.
You have not? I don't have anything important, other than, obviously, Monday is Martin Luther King Day, and the, just from a historical tidbit, if, you know, the "I Have a Dream" speech is, is one of the most famous speeches in American history, and if you, if you read about it or you research it, in his, in the written speech that he had in front of him, the phrase "I have a dream" does not appear. He had used it in a, in speeches before, and it didn't have the, the impact that he thought it would have. So when you, if you listen to it, and it's about thirteen minutes long, I, I would encourage people to listen to it. At the beginning, remember, he was Dr. Martin Luther King, he was a PhD, he was a very intelligent guy. And, but he was also an ordained minister. And when you listen to the beginning of the speech, it was very wordy, it was very intellectual, and, and it was very, it, the response just wasn't there. And about probably eight minutes into it, he went off script, and he started with the "I have a dream," and he kind of transferred from, you know, intellectual to Baptist preacher right in the middle of his speech, and the last four or five minutes is totally ad-libbed. And the "I have a dream" part was, was total, it was not written down anywhere. So I would encourage people to listen to it, because there were, there were many other segments of the speech that were, that were repetitive. And "we cannot be satisfied," he said over and over. There were many, there were other segments that were repetitive, but the "I have a dream" part is the one that stuck, and that's how it's, but for, oh, you know, over the weekend to remember, you know, where we were and where we've come from. But it's just, I've always found it interesting that the most famous part of one of the most famous speeches in American history was not written, that he just kind of wronged it as he got going. So if you want to check that out over the weekend, you can YouTube, and you can find it a lot of places.
Okay. And as mentioned earlier, we're, we're very excited about having airline service back to the airport beginning of May. It is a first step. We ask the public to, to utilize it, be supportive of it. It's like anything, if you don't use it, it's going to go away. We have a chance to grow with it and expand on it, and show them that the service is truly needed in Central PA, as we all know that. So we ask you to be positive in your comments, and please be supportive, as, as there's been a lot of people that were diligently on this to get us back in the game. And rural airports are a very, very tough environment right now, and very competitive what's, what's out there. We bring a lot of, of good things. We have free parking down there. At the same time, the extra bags will not be charged. The three airlines, I believe it was United, Alaska Airways, and American, it's one ticket to go straight through, which is nice. So it's very convenient, and Dulles is one of the greatest hubs that we could ask for down in Washington, because you can go anywhere in the world from there. So we're excited about this, and continue to work with them, and as, as things expand down there. Also, last Thursday, Senator Casey, he visited Lycoming County to discuss the levy and federal funding associated with the repairs and the upgrades. The commissioners at that time were in session at, at the time of his visit, it was our first public meeting, therefore, we were unable to attend. However, our planning department was there. We want to make a statement regarding the importance of completing the levy project for the safety and economic health for the county. First, we want to thank Senator Casey for visiting Levy and his commitment to work with the county and the city to provide continuing funds, to ultimately get the levy accredited and recertified. However, we also want to thank the former Congressman Fred Keller, who initially included eight million dollars through the House, Houses Community Project Funding Process, otherwise known as the Airmark Process. In the fiscal year 2023, the appropriations bill that funded Homeland Security, as many of you know, the congressman has a history of opposing earmarks. But in this case, the levy, a safety concern, he agreed to use the Airmark process for the levy. It's also important to mention that he used his entire Airmark allocation for this levy project. He loves the people like coming county, he may have known that they deserve this, and he was going to utilize all his resources to get this through. Finally, I'd like to thank the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for its work thus far in assisting the county and the city in determining exactly what parts of the levy are priorities. As many of you know, we've had some delays, starts and stops with the Army Corps' process, which has been frustrating, but from time to time, it's now to move the process forward to get this done, which can only be done with the Army Corps leading it, and frequently coordinated with the FEMA and PMA. Also, our planning department has spent countless hours, hundreds if not thousands of hours in this process, and many thanks to them. The Greater Williamsport Levy is the source that protects some four and a half billion dollars in community assets, including residences, businesses, schools, medical facilities, et cetera. And the county has worked hard and long to take the necessary steps regionally and in Washington DC to ensure the levy is the number one priority for our community. Its repair and upgrade will be the source of protection for our community, resulting in economic vitality for the region for years to come. The county is going to be continuing to work with the partners, the federal, the state, and local levels, to ensure that this work gets done. The county's completely committed to this project, we have been from day one. Many staff said we've taken the lead on it, I believe we have, and without it, I believe the levy would be recertified at this point. So hats off to the team, as we continue to move forward with this, and as we work together, we'll get this done. Thank you. Jenny?
No, thank you.
Any other comments? Any from the audience? Yes, Mr. Stell. And again, we ask comments to be brief, and for county issues. Thank you.
Yes, Larry Stell from Montgomery. I, I don't want to, our new Commissioner, Ms. Messina, I, I wanted maybe clarify a little bit more about the, the speech itself, because I used to teach public speaking, and I used that speech actually as how to give a speech, and because it is absolutely well-designed. The backstory is that he wasn't even invited to that. They, they, they wanted, because he was, he was the most recognizable person in the, in the movement, but the other guys were kind of a, a little bit intimidated, like, gee, we want to, we want our moment in the sun. And so they decided, well, we'll just stick him on at the tail end. And so by this time, it was hours that the thing had gone on, it was super hot, everybody's tired, everybody's sweating like crazy. He gets up there, and behind him was the Lincoln Memorial. And so he, his, his initial statement, based on the Gettysburg Address, he says, I wrote it down here, because I had to look it up, he made me think about this, Mark, because I got thinking how, how beautiful this is. Five score years ago, a great American in whose symbolic shadow we stand today signed the Emancipation Proclamation. That was the first sentence. So he's echoing four score and seven years ago, but it was a hundred years, it was eighteen, nineteen sixty-three, which was eighteen sixty-three is when it was the Emancipation Proclamation. So suddenly he has him. It, it was, it was, and they told him only had ten minutes. So I think it was twelve.
He was close.
Yeah, he was close. But you could tell that they were, they were captivated, they were like, this guy is really speaking to our hearts. And he's, he, and you're right, his speech ended, and behind him was Mahalia Jackson. And I met somebody, by the way, who was in that crowd, and confirmed this, because I heard this, and I said, I heard a story, and, you know, that's true. Mahalia Jackson said, "Welcome, tell them about the, the dream, tell them about the dream." Because that was sort of a, what do you want to call it, a stump speech, that he used again and again, all the time. You're right, it's a pastor. If you've ever been to a black church, they, you know, somebody say amen, you know, they just, they get so excited, and it's, it's wonderful to be in those kind of churches. But he, he did that. He, he began the, the dream speech, which was all, you know, impromptu, and that's what we all, now, and the thing is called, I dream, I, I, you know, the dream speech, but actually it really wasn't. But you're right, it captures the spirit of America, and, and as I have, you know, traveled the world and, and talked on, on public speaking a lot, that's one speech that I can say, this one is one that's universal, one that everyone can learn from and, and gather something from. So I, I just want to confirm, everyone should, should, it's, it takes you one second to find it on, 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 on the web, you know, you can read it in ten minutes, fifteen minutes, and, and, and it speaks of what we really are as a country and what we got to remember. So.
Did you know, before you run away, do you know the, they, how they found the speech?
No.
George, George Raveling is, he was a college basketball coach. He, I think he's in the college basketball, or the Basketball Hall of Fame. He was a student, he was a player, I want to say Villanova. So he was a college kid.
Wow.
And they traveled, he was close enough on the East Coast, so it might not have been Villanova, but he was close enough that they, he wanted to travel there. And so then he gets there, and he's six-six or six-seven, and, and so while he's there, someone said to him, will you help be security on stage, just in case?
Huh.
So he's, you know, twenty-one years old, and he's like, yeah, sure, I don't care. And he says, so after it's over, after the speech is over, he's on stage, and he said, Dr. King walked past him, and he just handed him his notes, and he said, here, kid, you want this? So he didn't know any, so he folded it up, and he said he had a book with him, because one of his favorite books, because he knew it was going to be a long day, so he folded it up and shoved it in his book. And then as years went by, it was like twenty years later, and I think he said he was talking to his mother or something, you, I just read this story this year. And he said, you know, it's, I think I have that somewhere. So he went through his personal library and started looking through books, and he found it. And so now it's, it's on loan, it's in some college somewhere. He, I think he owns it, but he loaned it to, it's in a museum or a college or somewhere, but it was a, and it was, it's not just some nobody, like, he's a guy in the, in the basketball hall thing. It's a neat story.
That's a great story. That's a great story. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. May?
I got to tell you, I go to a lot of commissioners' meetings, and this one by far has been the most interesting and informative that I've been to in a long time, so thank you, everybody. My name is James May.
We set the bar too high, then?
Yeah, this is really, very, very informative. My name is James May, and I am the Regional Director for Congressman Dan Muser, and with this being the kickoff to 2024, I'm trying to get around to all of the commissioners' meetings, to let everybody know that we are here for you, but when I say that to Lycoming County, I mean literally, because we are here, like, right upstairs for you guys, we're up on the fourth floor. I, I know that you mentioned this in your opening prayer and in your comments, but it was one year ago this month that Dan called and asked if I would be willing to transition from, I was working at the State Treasury and coming over to the federal side, and when he did, we sat down and talked about his priorities for this area, and he told me two things. He said, he's focused on the, the levy and focused on trying to get commercial air service restored to the airport here. And so there's been a lot of developments on those. Just wanted to let you know, I've been texting back and forth with DC as we're sitting here. Obviously, we're making progress, but I assure you that he is continuing to fight to get the essential air service restored as well, so that we can continue that growth. And I know that right now there's some community funding, he's spoken with you already about the, some community-funded projects that we're working on, and we want to echo as well what you said about Fred Keller, and thank him for the work that he did before Dan came on board. And so we're here to continue that work, and just want to introduce myself to the, the new folks I've met, most of you already. And I do have cards, and again, we are upstairs, if you ever need anything from the federal side, we are definitely here to partner with you guys here in, in Lycoming County.
Thank you. In the two trips that I've been out, opportunity to visit down DC regarding the airport levy, most recent being in December, with the director and, and Shane Rosman, the planning department, our director there, they graciously had us over to his office, we spoke about the airport, you know, the work that he's put into this, the levy, the airport, he has, you know, he says, I've been to probably a dozen different meetings, hearings on it. He introduces one of his staffers that.
Yes.
He goes, this is Joe from Scranton, and he joked around, this is the real Joe from Scranton. And he says, he's one of my staffers that I've specifically assigned to the airport to work on it, just that. And so his dedication to that, and now we're starting to see results, we want to thank him for his service.
It honestly has been, I'd, I'd probably say his top priority, I mean, at, at minimum, one of his absolute top priorities from the very beginning, and just about, we have a staff call every Monday morning, and it comes up ninety-five percent of the time discussing it, and I know that for Dan, it's been a top priority as well, so. And what you said is very, very true. I'll say it out this way, make sure that we now utilize this, because as we fight to, to, to help increase the, you know, get the essential air service and get more flights coming in, they're going to start looking and saying, you know, what are you doing with what you've been given already? Sort of like the talents in the Bible, you know, what have you been given, what are you doing with those? And so please utilize the airport as much as you can.
And as emphasized on Monday, this service has been down Lancaster, the same airline service, and it's been very successful in the Lancaster area, and, you know, and then to hear the gentleman say, this, this terminal will be his nicest facility to bring the service here.
It's a, it's a beautiful terminal.
Yeah, for him to say that, that he, you know, he was, he was boasting how beautiful the airport was here, and he's really enjoying that, to bring the planes here for that, so. You know, the service is also, I have new boys, I believe they train pilots out there also, and so, you know, we're excited about that, because we have shoreship pilots, and that's addressing that issue also.
Yeah, good. So, and thank you, on behalf of Congressman Muser, just want to say thank you, and anything you need from the federal side, we're here to assist.
Jim?
I just wanted to add on to what Mr. May had said. Many of you know Mark Brownsky, he works, he's, he worked for the county for a long time as our senior transportation planner, and as some of you may know, the planning department is the home of the MPO, which is Metropolitan Planning Organization, where we, we do a lot of the work with all the transportation projects, and we will contend not in the federal government. One of the things that Mark, who now works, is a part-time employee since he physically retired from the county, one of the things that he works on is aviation. He's on the state TAC board, Transportation Advisory Commission, I think it's called, and he's like, he's the vice chair, he's also on the aviation committee, and he helped develop and push for the state to do a statewide aviation study, which had never been done before, which got all the airports together to, to put their input into what can we do, what are the issues, and what we can, can we do to help solve some of these issues? Because a lot of other states have that already, and they work together, and that's something that Pennsylvania did not have. So they're in the process of doing that, and also by doing that study and being involved in the state committees, he was appointed by the, the governor at the time to that, that TAC committee, and also the Subcommittee on Aviation. By doing that, we were able to get the State Aviation Conference for the fall of this year, without even having a air service to an airport, you know, that, that was trying to get air, or air service, because we wanted to, we really pushed for that, because we wanted to promote the idea that we are a great place to have air service to. So he's been working very diligently on that, and we really appreciate the fact that he wanted to stay on part-time. So he's one of those, you know, Commissioner Shorman, he's one of those part-time employees that's helped us out a lot with very individual and high-level projects because of, of his knowledge and previous knowledge on those subjects.
Mark spent tremendous asset for his thirty-plus years with the county, to his state work, and when Frank Pellegrino called me, the Airport Authority Chairman, he had, he had asked for statements to be made by the commissioners, and asked if I would speak, and I called him back. And I had called him back and said, would you mind having Mark Browski speak too because of what he's done for transportation and with the airport, um, aviation, I mean, he's been involved in the bridge bundling program, he's been a tremendous asset, we can't take Mark out.
Yeah, and he's been a great, um, knowledge, wealth of knowledge for previous projects. I mean, he was around since.
A six.
Yeah, I was going to say mid-eighties. So, you know, he's been around a long time, you know, our, our current transportation staff and supervisor, Scott Williams does a wonderful job, but just having that, that background knowledge and he, we're able to focus his work, Mark's work on items that he's involved with on the state committee because it's, it's very honoring to have somebody on the state TAC committee in our office. So it's, we can funnel things up and, and that's really helpful. And not, you know, everybody has a governor appointee to the TAC committee, so, yeah, that's been very helpful.
Scott's been around a long time too. That's how he knows.
Well, I graduated high school in eighty-seven, so Mark's been around a little longer than me too.
He graduated long before that.
Not long before that.
But, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, we are going to have the state aviation conference come this fall and that will be something we'll, we'll make sure you're all aware of and our MPO is very excited to have it here.
Great event to be hosted.
Yeah, and the, at the airport, the chamber, um, are sponsoring it. I, we have Penn Colleges is, is, and, um, AFC, um, Textron is very involved in that also, so we're really excited about that. And we're going to be able to highlight a lot of the good things that are in the area.
Great, thank you. Any other comment? Yes, Chris Rabs.
Morning Commissioners, Tom Adams Williamsport. Psalm one nineteen, one seventy-one says, let my lips utter praise, for you teach me your statutes. That's, um, I think one of Martin Luther King's whole drive for America to see it, to see it stay on, um, the course of governance through the statutes of, of what we find in the Bible, you know, because Bible is a law book and it's, uh, first and foremost that. And he wasn't, and it's funny, nineteen sixty-three is, you know, we removed prayer and Bible readings, sixty-two and sixty-three, and sixty-three he gives a speech. And now what's happened, I think, one of those things that happens, this kind of occurred to me is that because, maybe because of that, because those pillars and groundings for, for our country, for education were taken out in those, in those years, uh, we have people now using this era of the civil rights as a dividing point. It wasn't meant for that, it was meant to bring us together as a country. And that was his whole, whole mission. And, uh, so we, it's really important, um, for us to realize that when we don't know our history and when, uh, Mr. May mentioned that, uh, you know, one of the most informative, maybe it would be a good idea, we have tidbits of history because when we don't know our history, we can be led around by things that, that just aren't true and it doesn't give you the, uh, fortitude to stand against the lies. So when, when we do have a full knowledge of our history, it, it'll embolden you to say, no, that's not right, it's, this is true. And when you, when you, people, most, a lot of people want to stand on what's true. No one wants to really be wrong and prove wrong, so, and, and it helps fortify our, our political governance too, so we know where to stand when, when trials come. And just want to mention that something that's being pushed by, uh, United Nations, uh, World Health Organization, there's a big drive in Washington, may be aware of, uh, they want to take over all sovereignty of every country in the world when it comes to health emergencies, Dell plane is an emergency, something such as COVID, they want to come in and shut things down and tell people how they can live, what they have to do, what they can't do. Of course, my personal thing on that is they come, I, you know, I'll just talk term for myself, but we need to stand as a nation to say no to it. And I, there's a public comment period going on until now to the eighteenth, they extended that. This has been ongoing, continually bringing this up over the past few years to push this. So I thought I'd at least mention that.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Hearing anybody online?
Yep, G. J.D. Digger, seems to me that over, that over the last four or five years, the county has had a tremendous problem with HR employees to pay a current employee who's leaving forty dollars an hour part-time, to me makes no sense at all. I think it's time that the commissioners get that department under control.
Thank you. Okay, now we have completed our agenda, so, um, meeting will be adjourned, our next meeting will be, um, Thursday, January the eighteenth at ten AM. Thank you everybody for attending. Heard a comment.
Oh, yes. I will do so.
I'm sitting there.